All right, thank you and welcome to this evening's work session. We will start off by having a roll call. Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
Present.
Commissioner Sana Gregory. Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Present.
All right, let the records reflect Madam Clerk that Commissioner Gregory is currently not present with us. So at this time, are there any preliminary items that any board member would like to discuss prior to the work session items? All right, here are none. Our first work session item will be an MOU with Georgia State University. That will be presented to us by Director Tori Strater Tanks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm also excited about this. This is another initiative that we're trying to embark upon with Georgia State University. And it's, we're really trying to combat isolation during the pandemic. And Dr. Laura Shannon House, she is going to do a presentation to you guys about the Be With program. And I think she's on the call. Okay, she's going to do a presentation to you guys about the Be With program. And I just want to say, two years ago, you guys approved for us to enter into an MOU with Georgia State for an assist program. And it has been really wonderful working with Georgia State. And Dr. Shannon House, her team is simply wonderful to work with. And they're really passionate about our seniors. So, Dr. Shannon House, you have a floor.
Thank you so much. I wonder if the person moderating the Zoom can give me the screen share? I have my slides ready to present. But usually you have to share this, give the screen sharing capability so that someone else that's not recognizing it.
You can try it again. Go ahead.
I can share, okay. Can you see these slides okay?
There we go.
Yes, we can see clearly.
Wonderful. Thank you for that introduction, Ms. Tori. She is wonderful. We've been working together for a couple of years now. And we just had a new grant funded from the Department of Health and Human Services to combat social isolation, loneliness, and elevated suicide risk with older adults. And so this is the grant under the Administration for Community Living. And to just give you an example of kind of the problem of suicide, if you consider, you know, the United States in the year 2019, there's about 329 million people in the U.S. And the reported number of suicides was 47,173 that year. However, there's a lot of things that interfere with reporting. So there can be accidents, miscategorizations. A lot of times, family would prefer that the suicide not be reported due to shame or fear or it being taboo. So actually, the number of suicides range anywhere from five to 25 times higher than the number of reported suicides. So there's a lot more going on below the surface. And suicide behaviors range 40 to 100 times higher than the number of unreported suicides. And usually, when someone dies by suicide, it can actually affect a whole lot of folks. It can affect, you know, a whole school community if it's a student. It can affect a whole senior-centered community if it's an older adult. So likely, we've all in some ways been touched by the problem of suicide. And if we run our statistics currently in the United States, there's more than 19 million people, 767,000, that have thoughts of suicide in this moment right now. And it happens that older adults actually are the most at-risk age cohort. And I'll tell you why in just a minute. In general, you can see it's about, the national rate is about 14.8 per 100,000. That's again, the report bid, so the under-reporting. Older adults of the reported range range a lot higher in terms of the percentage. And so an older adult in general dies by suicide in the United States every 65 minutes. And again, those that are unreported are 25 times higher, 40 to 100, 100 times more than that are things like non-fatal suicidal actions, suicide behavior, suicide attempts. So this means while we know older adults have one of the highest rates of suicide in the United States, there are likely even more deaths by suicide that go unreported and/or unnoticed. And so social isolation is a key predictor in the lethality of late-life suicide. And we know that this has been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Older adults that complete suicide are more likely to be widowers, live alone, perceive their health status as poor, experience poor sleep, experience loneliness, and a stressful life event such as financial discord, which has also been exacerbated by the pandemic. Even more alarming to us is that research shows that physicians are less willing to treat suicide or older adults when compared to younger patients. And they've even been found to believe suicidal ideation among older adults is normal. That should be really alarming to us, namely because about 20% of older adults who die by suicide saw their primary care physician within 24 hours of their death. So the leading theory of suicidal behavior is by Thomas Joyner. And in this theory, there's two big components. Older adults who desire suicide, or in general, anybody in the population who might desire suicide, and then people who are capable of suicide. And suicide desire is encapsulated by perceived burdensomeness and thwarted belongingness. Perceived burdensomeness is really about, I believe that I'm a burden on people that I care about or on society. This factor, which has been found to be part of a causal pathway, has also been exacerbated by COVID. So older adults in general, the medical community has even ethically prioritized the care of younger patients when we had the ventilator shortage. And older adults inherently got the message that it took more resources to care for them if they were to get sick. Those are some examples on how one can feel more like a burden to society. If the older adult needs to be having some caregiving, they can also feel like a burden on their family and the people that they love the most. And then thwarted belongingness is really about, I don't belong, I'm disconnected, I'm lonely and isolated. Of course, the physical distancing interventions that have been put in place have actually contributed to almost all of us experiencing a little bit of thwarted belongingness. When these two states happen at the same time, they've actually been found to be a causal pathway to suicide. But this is just suicide desire. So these two states, when they both emerge in a person at the same time, somebody can naturally start to think about dying by suicide. That doesn't mean they're going to die, it means they're thinking about it. People that are capable of suicide, they become fearless about pain, injury, and death. And when one is less afraid, that also increases with age because older adults have more experiences of loss because they've lived longer. And they've had family members that have died, they've had potentially spouses that have died, they've had friends that have died. And also, many live with chronic health conditions that are painful. So even just the normal course of life means that they may experience pain. And if you experience pain every day, you can kind of habituate to that pain or have more tolerance of that pain. So in general, just as a nature of growing older, you can become less afraid about pain, injury, and death. So the folks we really need to worry about are right here, who have developed both a desire and a capability to enact lethal self-injury. And to give you a little, this is a summary of the model. This is the model in general. So this is desire, this is capability, and I'm going to show you the pathway across it. So thwarted belongingness is really composed of loneliness and lack of reciprocally caring relationships. Reciprocal care is basically, do I care, do I contribute to someone else's life? And do they contribute to mine? And is there a reciprocity there? So when both loneliness and reciprocal care are both experienced by the person, they can start to feel a sense of thwarted belongingness that I am alone. Persons who have self-hate and liability feeling like, I make things harder on the people that I love. I'm a burden to those people. People would be better off if I were gone. That's the person experiencing perceived burdensomeness. If one has thwarted belongingness without perceived burdensomeness, or someone has perceived burdensomeness without thwarted belongingness, they can get passive suicidal ideation, meaning I'm thinking about dying, but I don't have a plan. If you have both of these at the same time, you develop a particular kind of hopelessness that things will never change. In fact, my life will always be like that, and it's not going to get any better. And suicide desire emerges. I want to kill myself, I want to die by suicide, is the things that we hear people say. And so that's the desire pathway. Capability means I have less fear of death because I have more experience with it. And I have an increased pain tolerance likely because I've had a chronic health condition or I've had an injury, or I've had exposure to pain where I've had to deal with that pain for a long time. So when you, I have desire for suicide and a lowered fearlessness about death, desire turns into suicidal intent. And when you have pain tolerance, intent turns into lethal or near-lethal suicide attempts. So this should be alarming to know how big the problem is, that older adults are the largest group that are the most at-risk considering the causal pathway to suicide. The good news is, is that suicidal ideation and suicidal behaviors are highly susceptible to intervention. And Clayton County, over the last two years, has put into its place the worldwide leader in suicide intervention. ASSIST is a two-day, 14-hour standardized and manualized suicide intervention training. It's been studied for the last 40 years. It's been standardized, manualized, and it's evidence-based. It's internationally recognized, it's part of SAMSA Evidence-Based Registry. It's also a part of the National Registry of Evidence-Based Programs. It's been adopted by branches of the U.S. Armed Forces, recognized by the Centers for Disease Control, and used in crisis centers across the country. And Clayton County is one of six counties in the state of Georgia who started a program to combat suicide two years ago and working with us. Ms. Tori even became, not only did she get trained in the two-day training, she also became a trainer and took a five-day training to be a trainer. So there, you guys are, have caught the attention of our federal sponsor for your commitment to the health and welfare of older adults. So this is a pathway for assisting life, which is the ASSIST model that you learn in the 14-day training. I can't teach you this model in five minutes, which is, I know I'm almost done with my talk. I got just three or four slides, so hang back with me. But I'm going to explain this 14-hour training in about five minutes. And it's going to be great because this is really a hopeful thing. So when you do this model, this is kind of the path of the person at risk up here, which is a pretty long path. And this is the path of us as the caregivers. And just like CPR, when anyone is drowning, somebody trained in CPR can do a life-assisting intervention just right now to help them get through the crisis and actually can save their life. So this is actually suicide first aid. It's the exact same thing as CPR is for one's physical health, for one's emotional, psychological health. And so usually, somebody, anybody can be at risk if a number of stressful life events pile up. Every one of us experiences normal, everyday life stressors that can add up. And when they add up and they get too big, we can start thinking about suicide as the answer to our problem. And so usually, the person is really stuck in the past, in tunnel vision, thinking about death, and is pretty alone. And they give off some pretty clear invitations. They might do and say things that are pretty obvious to us, like, I don't know how to live like this, life isn't worth living, I'm in unbearable pain, I make things worse for people that I love. That's somebody who's giving off some pretty clear invitations. So we teach people to explore those invitations. Tell me a little bit more, when you said you were a burden to other people, explain that to me. What did you mean by that? And if they say something like, well, I think people would be better off if I were gone, we're going to ask them directly about suicide. So it sounds like you're thinking about suicide. And that leads us to help, to connect with suicide, which is the first phase of the model. And that leads us to be able to hear the story. So can you tell me a little bit about what's got you to this spot? So I'm going to hear about the stressful events. Well, I've been isolated and at home, and I've been in COVID for a year. And I can't see my grandkids. And I'm just not really hungry anymore, and I don't want to eat any food. And I don't have a lot to look forward to. And so you start to hear some of the story about what's going on for someone. And as you start to hear the story, this is my favorite part of the model. It really, somebody starts to become in the present moment. They feel heard by the caregiver that's providing the suicide first aid. And when they feel heard, they can start to feel connected. And if they feel connected, this little, you can see this little squiggle line. You kind of think of this as an EKG machine. The line, the lifeline gets darker as you go. And this is right where the heartbeat starts to kind of beat again. The person will actually start to become uncertain. And they'll say things like, well, I'm not sure. And it's actually through the course of the intervention and hearing their story and understanding and connecting with them that there is a part of them that actually wants to live. And that part starts to speak up right here in this intervention. And it's really neat. And it's called the turning point, and it's my favorite card. And most other models, in fact, there's not a single other suicide model I've ever experienced that doesn't ask somebody to choose life or death. This model gets us clear about our choices and invites the person who's struggling to not make that choice right now, but gives them a different choice, a third option just to stay safe for just right now. I heard you say you're uncertain, that COVID's been pretty tough. But maybe there's a part of you that wants to die, but maybe also there's a part of you that wants to live. Would you be able to talk to me about a plan to keep you safe just for right now? And we know that this model works. We know that when it is engaged with someone who's at risk of suicide, we actually know that there's research evidence that tells us that the person is helped, they become more safe, they get in touch with their ambivalence about dying, they hear their stories being told. All of these are findings that came out of the Madeline Gould 2013 Journal of Suicide and Life-Threatening Behavior Double Blind Randomized Controlled Trial. And that's a fancy, she did some fancy statistics called hierarchical linear modeling to prove this model really works. And she did. And that's when it got on all these registries and got adopted by the Armed Forces and Centers for Disease Control and so on and so forth. So after we developed the safe plan, the last little bit is to confirm the actions. So to ask the person to repeat back to us what we have agreed to as another checkpoint on if we're on the same page. So there's, actually, I should not go all the way into, well, the next, the next step is really what we're asking for today, what Ms. Tori Strater Tanks has given to you guys as part of your work plan, which is this new grant that we just got funded. And so what, one part of what we did was, we proved, and this is a journal article we just had published, I'm happy to share it with you, which showed that older adults, Tori's, Clayton County's a part of this, who had pandemic disaster-related resource loss in COVID, that there were individuals within the community that got worse, some that got better, all related to the pandemic, but that there were certain things, certain resources that helped, certain social supports that helped. So I'm happy to share this journal article with you. These are just a bunch of fancy statistics saying that the Aging Services Network, senior centers like the ones in Clayton County, can improve the mental health of older adults. So this is our, what we're up to now. We're building on that research. And we've put together an innovation called BE WITH, belongingness and empathy with intentional targeted helping. The with part of that is people that are already trained in ASSIST. And the BE WITH is a warm calling program that we've just created. So BE WITH Together teaches any lay provider at all to be with older adults at a moment that they needed the most to address social isolation, loneliness, and elevated suicide risk. So what this is, is a partially nested randomized control trial. We're only using 60 volunteers, but we're actually, we're pretty ambitious. And we're making 3,840 warm calls to older adults that might need them. We have two conditions, BE and WITH, and volunteers are trained in different conditions. The calls are recorded and double-coded. And part of this is enabling us to get ASSIST on the National Council on Aging's Evidence-Based Registry. So this is what Clayton County gets if you decide to partner with us. You get eight warm calls to older adults that receive home and community-based services through Clayton County. Your older adults get $100. You get free trainings in the worldwide leader in suicide intervention, as well as the BE Warm Calling Program. And anybody who participates as a warm caller gets $600. And this is our Warm Calling Program. It's already been endorsed at the federal level by the National Resource Center on Nutrition and Aging. And these are just some of the key components. We teach people to actively listen, to be aware of euphemisms, to normalize experience, provide empathic responses. And we give them tables so they can take notes and learn what are the children's names of the older adults? What are their grandchildren's names? What are their siblings and parents? What are their favorite hobbies and places? So that as they call them over the next eight-week period, they can pick up the next phone call where they left off. These are some of the resources we created in our first grant. You guys can use them and have them because you all actively contributed to them. Mrs. Tori Strater Tanks also, in addition to being ASSIST-trained, in addition to being a trainer, she also did a news, a news piece too. I should have put the news piece up here in addition. And some of these publications, particularly these two, in Psychology Today, she was quoted. So we just want to say thank you especially to her for all of our partnership. And here's the references, and that's my email if anybody has any questions.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Shannon House, for that very informative presentation. And thank you for all that you're doing in the area of suicide, acknowledging that it is a social ill, that there are situations where people might be overlooking what's going on with their brother, sister, father. But by knowing what they're going through or what they're talking about, or even throwing out those little key words, that there might be something more going on in their head. So thank you for all the work that you're doing in that area. And Ms. Tori, you are.
Yes, here, Mr. Chairman Turner, yes, you've got it. You absolutely got it. You, by doing something small, you can save a life, you can make a difference. And even a small dose of social connection and belongingness can make a difference. And you guys have already been doing that the last two years. Our hope is that you'll want to keep doing that with us the next, the next, the next couple of years too.
Yeah, and only makes sense that we do so. And like I was going to say previously to Ms. Strater Tanks, thank you for being the person that you are, not only an excellent director, but somebody who truly cares about our aging population and making sure that you bring these type of situations to us so we can actively do something about it, or at least try to assist them in any way possible. We do have an aging population. And their concerns and needs should be first and foremost on our minds as board of commissioners. So thank you, Ms. Strater Tanks and Ms. Shannon House. Are there any other comments or questions from any of the board members? Okay, here are none. Thank you again, Ms. Shannon House and Ms. Strater Tanks for the presentation. And we will move on to voluntary benefits renewal from Ms. Pam Hammonds.
Hey, Mr. Chair, would you note that I am here?
Yes, yes. Madam Clerk, please note that Commissioner Sana Gregory is present at this time.
All right, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair Gregory, Commissioners Franklin, Hambrick, and Davis. This is a brief, high-level presentation. I think I have no more than eight slides. Supporting documentation that I believe will be helpful to the board, I will, I'm committed to present that to you all by the close of business on Thursday. So you all will be receiving more detailed information. The purpose of this presentation is simply to provide information to the board about our upcoming agenda item to request renewal of our life and income continuation products. Before I get started though, I want to speak very briefly about our current plan year. Savings thus far are shown up here on the slide. So far, we've saved $346,000. Recently, we've had $51,000 credited to our account. And we have $2,819 that's coming to us soon. We're also beginning to realize our robust wellness program. We have implemented several initiatives recently. We have Weight Watchers, Total Brain, Mobile Health, the Human Resources pop-ups. We decided not to do that. This was to incentivize our employees for getting their COVID vaccinations. So instead of the pop-ups, we're actually, an email went out today where we will be rewarding about 200 employees with $25 gift cards for completing their round of COVID vaccinations. And needless to say, we have just been overloaded with questions and response, which is exactly what we wanted. Other programming for our wellness program, we want to do a COVID essay for children. We want to sponsor employees of the quarter. Of course, we have the Chairman's 5K that's going to be coming up, as well as the Lake's 5E Roadway race. And the good thing about all of this is this is not costing the county anything. We do have our wellness funds that are available that we're using to finance these initiatives. But there's a whole lot more to come. Of course, I've got to get with the COO and legal to make sure that I'm operating in the parameters that I need to be operating in. The board approved our 2021 benefit mix, and we definitely appreciate you all for that. Within the 2021 benefit mix is a six-month renewal for our life and income continuation products. We opt for a six-month renewal based on very high increases on the life and the LTD products. And LTD, the Long-Term Disability Products. As shown on the slide, we were faced with a 97% increase in the life products, a 40% increase in the long-term disability. During that particular time, we even absorbed $56,000 on behalf of the employees because we did not want them to experience this high increase at that time. The high increase has actually led to an audit, Human Resources and Collaboration with our consultant, and the Hartford, we actually did an audit to look at the data because these increases were so high. The 2021 strategy, we negotiated the six-month renewal. But we also initiated an RFP. We received nine quotes, and only four did we find competitive. So on behalf of Clayton County employees, we are requesting to terminate our contract with the Hartford and select New York Life as the carrier for the life and income continuation products. The request has no budgetary impact. And as a matter of fact, it will result in savings for the county and our employees of $346,425. And you'll see up on the slide, now Hartford did submit a proposal. And that proposal was 10% less than our current premium that you'll see there at 1.5 million. Their proposal was for 1.3 million. You can also see up there that New York Life, their proposal for annual premium is 1.1 million. And this represents a 23% decrease for our employees. We also have a rate guarantee January 1st, 2025, which is very important in the world of benefits because benefits is such an up and down environment that when you get those rate guarantees that say, hey, we're not going to charge you a dime more until 2025, those rate increases are very, very important. And as I said earlier, it results in lower rates for both our, the county and our employees. What you see on this slide is just the general information about the proposed carrier, New York Life. Financial strength, their assets are valued at $414 billion. They have earned the highest financial strength rating of any other insurer. They have definitely been around for a long time. They have been in business for 176 years. We are not losing that one thing as a result of this transition. As a matter of fact, we are actually getting expanded benefits. We have a 529 rider plan, which is very important. Occupational components as well, a proactive disability claims model, as well as accelerating death benefits. That 529 rider is very important. That one is tied to the basic life. And in the event of a parent's death, a child will receive $10,000 for college-related expenses. The only backdrop to that is that it has to be used for the intended purpose. Otherwise, there's a 10% taxation on it. But that 529 rider is very important. So transition for the employees. Although much is going on behind the scene on the employees' behalf, but there is absolutely nothing that they need to do. As I said earlier, there is no loss of any benefits. It will be, if the Board approves it, it will be a seamless transition. As I said earlier, there are some enhancements and just a few of those are noted on the previous slide. If approved, of course, notification of the carrier change will be sent to our employees. Also, New York Life EAP. On 7/2/19, the Board approved $45,000 for an EAP program to be implemented effective Plan Year 20. Well, due to changes and transitions to a new broker, the EAP was not implemented. But it is definitely greatly needed, especially in these COVID times. Piggybacking off the presentation that you just saw, also Resolution 91-103, that's our substance abuse policy for Clayton County. There is an EAP component to that. And the EAP program that we currently have is not good. So the Board did approve that. And we are requesting to implement New York Life, a best-in-class EAP. And we will have our own dedicated account manager. And up here on the slide is just a few of the benefits. We recognize that our managers work hard and sometimes they find themselves in different situations. So there is unlimited phone support specifically for managers, as well as unlimited telephonic calls and counseling. There is a component for support for military veterans, crisis intervention. And very important to me is utilization reports. We will be able to see how the EAP is being utilized. And if there's anything later down the road, we would need to probably try to add to it or take away. I want to thank you all. I told you it would be brief. I want to thank you all for allowing me to present this information. I feel that we do have a lot of good things going on in benefits administration. I want to send a shout-out to my team, as well as our new consultants. Our focus is to implore saving, cost-saving strategies. But we never want to sacrifice the quality of our benefits in doing that. And that's all I have, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Amos. Are there any questions?
Good work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I definitely agree. I appreciate the work that your staff has been putting into, always looking out for the best interest of our employees and saving us a little money in doing so. So thank you for that as well. Are there any?
We can't do it without you all, Chairman. So I thank each and every one of you as well, as well as my COO.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Since there's no question, let's go to the next item, which just points out apartments, the blighted communities discussion. And I believe Commissioner Franklin was going to lead this discussion or at least have a statement in reference to.
Okay. No, I was not going to lead the discussion, but thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually sent over specific information to the COO as well as to our Community Development Director as this pertains to not only dealing with Pine Brook Apartments, but there are several blighted areas in the county. And during dealing with Pine Brook Apartments, particularly, as I've sent over to you and staff over a year and a half ago or so of outlining several issues with those apartments, we unfortunately ended up having a convena meeting to be able to go over those items. And there were several critical things that came out of that meeting. And I sent over an email once again to you and the staff on the items in regards to our processes and procedures in this county, which allow for such blighted areas to go up. But since you said that I'm leading it, I would like for the staff, if they can, the tech folks to either come in and help me. But I want to just simply pull up the apartment name and we can begin from there.
All right. Well, I see Mr. Stanford is before us right now. So while you're waiting on the tech folks, Ms. Stanford, you have some?
But, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I would like to pull it up first, please, sir, since you threw it to me initially, okay? Thank you. We can just Google Pine Brook Apartments and it will allow to be able to set forth the discussion since you asked for me to start.
Well, your name was on the item. That's why I referenced you.
No worries, sir. There's people in the IT room. Can y'all pull up Pine Brook Apartments, please?
Commissioner, it has to be controlled from the Board here with Jane. She's trying to pull it up, ma'am.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. In the meantime, I will pull up the email. The first of great concern is that once you see this apartment complex, this conversation is not only germane to Pine Brook, but it also applies to Sherwood, as well as to several other apartment complexes and trailer parks in our community. And a great concern is that in this particular apartment complex, we have noticed there are several people that do not have even electricity. The windows are boarded up. The trash is overloading and overflowing. And in fact, in the words of the police officers, "Don't go back unless we go with you." So I'll say all that to say, it is a great concern to me that during the meeting, it came out that somehow this particular complex was able to get their business licenses renewed year over year. Also, in the meeting, when I looked at it, I asked Pine Brook. There you go. And you want to put, if you may, area of Riverdale, Georgia. And in the meeting, there you go. If you could look at those pictures, starting from the top left, I believe. In the meeting, we also noticed that the facility has several group homes living there. And obviously, they have to fall underneath. Either they're working in a legal or illegal capacity. But also, we received information, which once again, I sent over to the staff, that showed that there are several of them that are actually legal and operating out of this facility. So it's a great concern to me as a commissioner and a policymaker that we're able to continually renew licenses for these blighted areas. And I would like for our Board to consider how we can move forward to where businesses like this don't constantly get their license renewed automatically. And then the other question that I posed that's at the top of that list is how do they pass a fire inspection? So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stanford and then I'll resume with the other questions that I sent over to them regarding this and again, other units within our community.
Ms. Stanford.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Franklin is 100% correct. There was a facilitated meeting with staff. The staff included our Community Development Department, Fire EMS, PD. And, of course, my office was represented in the meeting. And Commissioner posed several questions with regard to things that she wanted to be addressed with regard to blighted areas within the community. Let me start by saying that the areas that were outlined, the first question she kind of piggybacked on just a second ago was with regard to the issuance of business licenses and fire inspections. As it pertains to renewal of those respective areas, it's not mandated by statute that you have to do a renewal and those areas be in compliance prior to the issuance of those respective licenses. But in retrospect, taking Commissioner's recommendation, the staff have gone back to look at other best practices in the other communities to try to determine if there are some other things that we can do to kind of address those areas to want to see if there's a tie-in to renewals as well as quality-of-life issues within those respective communities. So staff is working to provide some policy recommendations to the Board to address said question. Commissioner, I don't know if you want us to go by each of the respective questions that you asked and the responses that we provided. But whatever's the pleasure of the Board, we certainly can do that.
Well, and again, I don't want it to be just about this particular location. This is an issue throughout our county. And thank you, Dietrich, for going over that. And I think you hit the highlighted areas. But one thing that I do want to circle back to is that this issue and concern as we're talking about Pine Brook is not just with Pine Brook. We have a Community Development Division. And the title of it is Community Development. That means that we should be developing out our communities within the county that align with, as you all say, the pillars that we have, which is the quality that we want to see in our community. So we know that the Police Department was able to provide us with information on, as you just stated, Dietrich, with issues within this particular complex. But somehow, that information was not transferred over, I guess, to Community Development. We've got to find a way to make sure that we communicate between these various departments so that we can stop seeing the blight and seeing these licenses renewed. Of course, you alluded to making sure that we look at it from a policy standpoint. But even more so than that, if we're going to create something like a Citizens Review Board, it goes beyond just the apartment complex. We are renewing the licenses of businesses, but we're expecting them to fall within our guidelines as a community, but with no recourse of action. So we're just going to renew their license and basically, again, there's no recourse of action. So we've got to see what we can do about that. Another thing is, when I was looking at it and talking to the Solicitor General, I'm trying to send this over to either Jason or Shantrel. Maybe they could pull it up. But when I talked to the Solicitor General, one of the things that he was not aware of either is the violations in that area. And the communication, I think, would benefit us as a community, as a county, to have that level of communication. Because a lot of these violations are not just county violations, but they're actually state violations. The other point I think is important for this Board to keep in mind, and quite often, we find that code enforcement would cite them based upon our code, but then we are sending that citation to the community manager. At the end of the day, the community manager is not the owner of said property. So if we're really going to make a difference, I was hoping to be able to hear a little bit more detail on what we're going to do to combat not just the issue with Pine Brook, but other areas as well throughout the community.
Commissioner, certainly, we'd be glad to speak to those policies and those changes that we are looking to address, if you would like.
Yes, thank you so very much.
Certainly. And all of the points. I think the first point we want to outline, there is a delineation. And I think it's just a matter of how do we right ship, I guess, the respective operations side of the House when we made the changes from the residential code enforcement moving it to our corrections side of the House? And understanding that the commercial side of the House still resides under Community Development. The reality of it is that because it starts out as a residential issue, even though it's a commercial licensing issue, we have to ensure that there's continuity on both sides of the House. So therefore, to your point, the right hand and the left hand know specifically what they're doing. So we are talking through that process. But here's a couple of bullet points that we outlined in the correspondence back to you and the Board with regard to policy decisions. One is tying quality-of-life violations or a county citation to the issuance of a permit and business license. Again, reiterating the point that right now, there is no context to have it to tie the two in. Also, implementing a special quality-of-life ordinance to regulate apartments or multifamily housing could be another issue that we can potentially look at to address some of the concerns that are outlined with any blighted area within the community. Also, enacting a comprehensive county trash collection plan. I know that the Board is slated to have a larger discussion at the next work session to just talk more about opportunities in that space. So ultimately, that will be a way of also addressing the quality-of-life issue. And then lastly, creating a vacant property registry to protect neighborhoods from blighted areas. So therefore, when we know we have a registry upfront that when we have these blighted areas, we have a way by which we can get in contact with the owner and not necessarily the manager of said properties to ensure that ultimately, the ultimate people that we need to hold accountable, they're actually in the registry opposed to the management team. We also talked about we're having a meeting slated with the magistrate court judge, Judge Keisha Wright-Hill, to talk about enforcement from a citation standpoint. When we have these individuals that are being vetted through the court system, then ultimately, we want to make sure there's teeth in our respective enforcement side of the House. So ultimately, that doesn't become a problem later on. Lastly, I would like to bring to the table that even though we do recognize that there are some things that we can continue to do better, do recognize that ultimate enforcement lies with the court system. And if the court system, as we all know, has been closed for the last year, there has not been a prioritization, as you may say, with that area being covered. So ultimately, when the courts do open back up, we do look at this as being a priority as we talk to the judges, as well as our staff, about things we can do to address some of the blighted areas throughout the community.
Thank you. That is, I'm looking forward to us continuing on with that. I also asked Jason to please pull up what I just sent him, and it should have included some additional pics because I'm looking at the history here. And it shows that they've actually failed inspection, fire inspection, each time. It goes back as far as 2019. But the interesting part is the pictures, if they can get them up, even on the search, came from 2017. So I'm hoping that with the things that have been outlined this evening, as we work through them hopefully quickly, that it would be able to not allow, as we stated, for these licenses to be renewed. Because again, with this particular unit, there are boarded-up windows. There are units without doors on them. There is no electricity. And even with it showing that they followed up on the inspection of 20, on the 20th of 2020, and that's February 2020 from the previous year, I'm not sure how this passed inspection, a fire inspection, so.
Commissioner, so we did respond to that as well. Chief Merkison is on the line. Certainly, he'll provide you some more context to that response. Chief?
He needs to be promoted to panelist, he said.
Yeah, they're working on it.
Okay.
Chief, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go right ahead.
Yes, sir. So as I replied to in the questions, each time we have gone out to Pine Brook, the fire code is very specific on what areas of apartment complexes the Fire Department and its fire inspectors inspect. We do not go in every single living unit. Our inspections are limited to the common areas, the leasing offices. If a building has a hallway or a breezeway or other common area, those are inspected. Of course, any of the maintenance shops and other hazardous areas of apartment complexes are inspected. As I noted in the response to Commissioner Franklin, Pembroke has failed their fire inspection. Each time they failed, it was due to missing fire extinguishers. Each time we've been out there, they've provided us record after record of where they bought the fire extinguishers. the fire extinguishers, they put them in the appropriate boxes, they have to be attached to the exterior of the building, and when they do so, they're immediately torn out, discharged, and then thrown in the trash can. So, you know, when we go out there and we note these violations, the apartment management corrects them, they put the extinguishers back in, and that is why we mark them as passing. And then eventually, it happens again. As far as the boarded up windows, the international fire code, and I've supplied the code, mandates that those windows and the language in the code specifically says that they are to be boarded. So, if a building is vacant, if a building has other issues, the fire code does require that those facilities are boarded. Once again, when we go out there, specifically, I think it was the 700 building, we go out there, we make sure that the entire facility is boarded, we mark it up, if it's not, we go back, we re-inspect it. Inevitably, as soon as, you know, that those repairs are made, they're torn down and the plywood is pulled off, you know, the walls again. So, it's an ongoing struggle. It's not only management trying to do what they can do, but, you know, a lot of it is a behavioral issue out there as well with some of these properties. So, you know, our inspections are thorough, we hit the areas that we have jurisdiction to hit, and we apply the codes that we are mandated to enforce by the county code. And they are very specific in what our mandate is out of the fire marshal's office as well. So, if there is a violation, we note it, and we do go back and follow up with it. So, you know, and Commissioner Franklin is right, this is not just a discussion with Pembroke, this is a discussion with a lot of our apartment complexes in the county. And the rate at which they change hands from a management level makes that enforcement mechanism difficult, because each time they change hands from a management standpoint, essentially, it starts over. And, you know, we have to start this process again with new management, trying to get them up to speed, trying to figure out who the owners are. And it's just a continual process, but it's one that we work hand in hand with code enforcement to do. Unfortunately, in many cases, we're bound by what our ordinances say we can enforce, and we're bound by what the code and the law says we can do. And once we exhaust those options, you know, then it has to become a bigger policy decision as to what does the board want us to do once we hit A, B, and/or C. You know, but it's an ongoing continual process, and I certainly understand the frustration my inspectors get frustrated with, with having to deal with the same things repetitively. But in some cases, it's not, it's not management's sole responsibility. They make the necessary repairs, and the damage is caused again within a month or two, and we're right back out there. So, when you look at it and you say, how can we continue to have these level of violations? Well, it's because the damage continued to get stunned, the vagrants enter the buildings. You know, as soon as the boards go up, they rip them down, so it's an ongoing continual process. But, you know, as far as how did they pass fire inspection, they corrected what we asked them to correct, and they corrected the violations that we're allowed by law to cite them on. And once they do that, we have to pass them. You know, and we can't go out there, you know, once a week or once a month and just continual, you know, to police those facilities. We simply don't have the staff to do that and be able to get to all of the other facilities and businesses that we have to inspect in the county as well. So, it is a tremendous issue, and, you know, it's one that definitely deserves and warrants the conversation.
Thank you, Chief. And it brings it to this point, why I thought it was very important for me to have this addressed among of us as a board. You've already stated, it's not just germane to Pine Brook, but if our laws that we have in place are allowing for these facilities to continually receive a passing inspection once they tweak a few things, then as a board, as policymakers, my question to us is, what can we do to help Chief, who has done an amazing job, I gotta tell you that, oh, Chief, and then also code enforcement, who has been very responsive, and the police department? How do we do that? And do we do it with community development, which is supposed to develop out our communities? Do we do it through recommendations by this board, by looking at, as Mr. Stanford has stated earlier, best practices? But we've got to come up with a concrete plan, because at the end of the day, what's happening is, the citizens are paying for this repetitiveness, citizens like ourselves, who are responsible citizens. And as you just alluded to, it's taxing on the staff that are doing their job. So, where does it begin? And how can we ensure that we have a specific timeline, that we have specific deliverables to be able to stop this from going forward or continue, being a continuous issue?
Any other comments or statements? Anything else, Commissioner Franklin?
No, I just look forward to the timeline on the things that have been outlined, and as we make sure that we get updates on us moving through them, and use all our resources, every resource available to us throughout the state of Georgia and locally. And through community development, with CDBG funding specifically. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. We appreciate those comments. All right, if there's no other comments on this item, we'll move on to the next 2021 HUD Annual Action Plan, will be presented by your partner, Jakey.
Chairman and vice chair commissioners, good evening. This is the first time we are bringing our annual action plan to a work session to present to the commissioners. This is how we tell HUD how we're going to use the funding that had been awarded to the county. There are three major areas for this funding. Please note, this funding does not have anything to do with COVID. This is our regular funding annually, and it comes in three different pockets. And before I go, I start a presentation, I would like to introduce two of our staff members who actually dig into this and make sure that we are doing what HUD wants us to do, and also what the Board of Commissioners demand of us. I have here with me Ms. Linda Boswell, the HUD manager, and also Mr. James Starley, the HUD financial officer. These two staff members make sure that they keep me out of trouble, because when we make a mistake, HUD sends OIG, and when OIG shows up in your jurisdiction, it's a different ballgame altogether. Next. So, I'm going to talk a little bit more about this outline here, because it seemed to encapsulate what we do. When we, when HUD notifies us anywhere around February, they usually send a letter to the chairman's office and copy us. Then, once we get that letter, we actually start before the letter gets to us. So, if you look at this action timeline that we use for this year, it mirrors what we do every other year, except that this year, we introduced the work session. So, it starts with application release and some other period opens. In November, we start talking to folks, the process, talking to whoever wants to be part of this process. This year, we had three workshops. The applications for HUD program are technical in nature, and the complete next of that application sometimes decides if you get an award or not as a subrecipient. So, we have three sessions, and we have one of the sessions dedicated to county departments as specifically. So, by the time, about December 18th, the application submitter period closes, and application review starts. That review is intense, because we need to meet under HUD guidance and regulation, the national requirement, but internally, because the way we process HUD funds in the county, it is based on reimburseables. We do see some small outfits, subrecipients, nonprofits, that we're excited about products that they have, the programs that they have, but they cannot qualify, partly because the program is based on reimburseables. You have to go do the project, pay for it, then submit your invoice. And it kind of makes it a little bit difficult for the smaller ones to do it. But more importantly, we rely on folks who understands every step of the documentation that is needed. Just a sidebar, Chairman, remember when he came into our first go first time, I had an issue where a faith-based organization that we helped could not explain their program, we had to go get their boss and the computers. And I remember what Chairman Turner told me, don't let this happen no more. So, and I still appreciate that being lenient. But so, we started being careful about what we do. So, once it goes, we go into the vetting, there are specific guidelines that we follow to do the vetting. So, we also give, if you look at after the application review period, you get to the final due date to receive modifications from departments and agencies. Most times within the county, because county department heads analyze to date, they have staff doing this for them. And I say to staff, okay, we got to, this is us, we got to make sure that the eyes are dotted and the ears crossed, so that we don't make any mistake. So, we create space for those adjust, and also agencies that might have, we know, we want to clarify something about what they're saying to us in that application, we give them the time. But when that closes, the next step, March 11th, we finalize the draft funding recommendation and public duties. Then after that, we publish, HUD requires that we publish this, that whatever we do, it is part of the public duties. And it runs, it runs for, once we publish it, it goes to Clayton News Daily, then it gets published. It has to run, we have a 30-day comment period. That 30-day comment period is still on, but by the rules, we can still be able to do what we do. If you look at the BOC work session, it's April 13th, and we added our process in the county for when to key in work session and legislative requests, all built into this step, so that we don't miss any. If we miss it, it delays the process. So, today, we are here today at the work session on the 13th. If you notice, the public comment period lasted 24th. It's for a reason, so that the regulation allows it. Then we go to, on the 28th, when it comes in front of you, between now and the 28th, changes can be made to it, because the process allows it. Then, once the BOC approves what we are presenting and said, okay, you approve it, then we still have to submit it to HUD. They have the final approval in their own way. They have to go through the process and make sure that their systems are properly documented. So, they do that. So, this is really the brain trust in terms of project timeline that we use, I mean. So, when we finish our work, we get here. And if you look at the subheadings on the left side on the applicant, this is how HUD wants to see it. And there's no mistaking that this is a housing program. You'll hear affordable housing, decent housing, all the homelessness prevention, all those things. This is, it's a housing, a housing program. So, these are the folks that all the subrecipients see it and the, and some, most of our municipalities are here, nonprofits and county departments. Everyone that is on this list is qualified under HUD regulation, and that is what we are doing. On the left side, if you look at the allocation given to us, you see CDBG, Home, and ESG. Total funding 3.7, but the total request is 5.4. That immediately tells you, we cannot squeeze out extra down on this money. We have to go to make sure that programs we know that perform, that we can fund them. If you look at numbers 13, 14, 15 on the chart that are in red, they're for a reason. This is money we had to go take with from programs that we are not performing, to put it into new initiatives that are very pregnant to the county, and we know going to move real fast, and that's why we put it, that we put it in there. If we do not expend the money per HUD code, the county pays a penalty. Usually, if you do not meet what is called a 1.5 ratio of expenditure, HUD penalizes the county. And the penalty for the county, it's really drastic, because they reduce our funding by how much we did not spend. So, we have to really be careful. And I will say, I tell them this all the time, Ms. Boswell and Mr. Starley, thank you again, the rest of the county, because they have religiously maintained 1.5. We don't usually have any issues, and we call meetings of department heads, I call my colleagues whenever we have any kind of compression in their areas to say, hey, help me out and get this money moving. So, kind of, don't go too much into this. This is what we advertise to the newspaper. The detail shows that we must meet HUD regulation. What are we telling the public? It has to be transparent, and it has to be out for 30 days. So, the highlighted areas are the areas we're telling the public what we are doing. And all the fine print, most of them, can't language that's coming from the program that must be on one, on the ones on the bottom right, you see where we cited HUD code, 24 CFR 570. We're doing those to make sure we are meeting regulation. I'm not sure if the board remembers, haven't seen this one time, that I was asked to discuss process about HUD. What would we do? You now see that an actual process with data that does it. But this workflow is what we used to bring us here today. We stay with this workflow, it talks about application submission, workshops, the things we want, our eligibility to make sure that nonrecipients meet national objective assessment and all of it. Then it goes to the third phase where it comes to the Board of Commissioners. So, this is really everything you've seen fitted to this process. Next. So, that ends the, my presentation about HUD process.
All right, thank you for that presentation, Mr. G. Excuse me. Questions or reference to the presentation?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I noticed on the list, you talked about slum and blight funding, and you had a list of, of places, I guess. But let me ask you this. I understand the process, but how are we going to fit that list within the ability to be able to see change within our community?
A very good question, Commissioner. Process, sometimes, policy and process don't happen. For us to use HUD money, we cannot use it on private property.
Got it.
That is from, that started. So, what we do is, like the COO alluded to, we have a number of properties, I'm not sure exactly how many, that is in the courthouse waiting for the courts to open up to address nuisance abatement. The moment they go through the nuisance abatement, then we can engage.
Got it.
So, what we do is, because of, sometimes, we like to know what is coming, so we can plan ahead, because we cannot park money, if you will, because we get in trouble. We have, where we cannot say that we're going to award slum and blight and leave it there. We usually know that something is coming and planning. It takes about a year, a year and a half or two. By the time you get there, you have the money to do it. We have spent roughly about 1.3, 1.4 million demoing apartment complexes in the county. These are huge projects that when they come, we'd like to be prepared. So, Commissioner, the short answer is, we have to get through the nuisance abatement process, take it to where we can use HUD funds.
Okay, and I'm not saying it has to be only HUD funds that are utilized, but let me ask you this question, then. Would there be a benefit to the county to be able to not only have, as you just stated, the information of the exact number that are going through the abatement process, and then for us to explore opportunities either through maybe a TOD effort, you know, transit-oriented development effort, or even taking it through just a effort to where economic development would be able to purchase, or however we need to do it. I'm not the subject matter expert, but I do know, we all know the problem exists. But again, the question is, what is every option available to us so that we, as a board, can consider it?
Yes, Commissioner. Uh, yes, Commissioner, um.
Including economic development, uh, through the economic development arm?
The C O O put together the Quality of Life Committee that, um, started a couple of years ago. He put it together, that a couple of department heads meet and talk. In that meeting, we do know how many, and, and legal is part of that, uh, meeting. Uh, we do know how many cases that are, I just don't know the number. But, uh, we know how many cases are willing for, uh, for abatement. The next stage is that, that's in discussion is, when we do an abatement, is the county willing to take that property and redevelop it? It's a decision, it's a policy decision that we are working on to bring to the C O O and say, okay, you're here, when you go get it, what do you do with it? How do you redevelop it? There are so many ideas that's going to come out of there as to, the more you go do the abatement thing and foreclose the right of redemption. Because once you do the abatement and get us a nuisance, the county has to figure out a way to foreclose the right of redemption. And it becomes county property, but we don't want to be landlords. It doesn't help our tax base. Therefore, how do we turn it around? All this is coming to the C O O, and we have preliminary discussion. He just wants us to put it on paper and quit talking to him.
Okay. Well, I, and I know it's a lot, it's a lot for you, Mr. Ajiki, I'm sure, and I understand that. So my next question, I guess, to you as well as, uh, to our C O O. What other entities have you all brought in to help you through this process? Because, you know, I, I live by the saying that there's no need to reinvent a wheel. All you got to do is add a spoke here or there. So we see it happening in other areas quite often where they're able to make it a win-win-win situation. So who do we have at the table outside of just our staff to help us through this process?
Uh, Commissioner, we tapped into, uh, the resources at A R C. We use A C C G, um, N A C O, um, I C M A. Uh, we utilize quite a few of our thought partners, not just within the metro region. But we're also looking at communities that are similarly situated with Clayton County that might have, um, some challenges from a, um, a, a economic development perspective of housing. But at the same time, we're dealing with blight at a very high level, maybe not as high as that we're dealing with, but are dealing with it. So again, we're pulling in all those, those resources to the table, having the staff to review that, and then utilizing those resources to make policy recommendations to the B O C.
Awesome. May I ask that you also include our transportation because, um, um, provider, Marta? Because as we know, they presented to us that they're going to be inputting a lot of money around the, um, train stations. In Clayton County, unfortunately, we don't have a train station. So if there are, again, T O D funding, uh, available that we can consider because a lot of these places are off main corridors. There is a, um, I know there's a, uh, what is a trailer park right off of Georgia Highway Three and, uh, but the U S nineteen forty-one, great opportunity to have a transit oriented development. So I'm just really looking forward to, again, this outline of, um, I guess, the outline and the timeline as we work through these items because it's a great opportunity. You know, with every problem, it gives us an opportunity to not only provide a solution, but to be, uh, unbelievably successful. And so I'm looking forward to us as we work through this process.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Ajiki, for your presentation. And your staff has, uh, have obviously got a lot of work to do, and I appreciate all the efforts y'all are making thus far. All right. Next is the legislative update, but they have a conflict that they have to deal with. So I will have to bring them back on next work session. They apologize for the conflict, but unfortunately, it was out of their hands at this time. So we will move on to the Gilbert Road presentation by Ms. Erica Rockwell Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Turner, Vice Chairman Gregory, and Board of Commissioners. Uh, I, it's my pleasure to present to you the Gilbert Road Project Concept Plan and tonight's speaker, who will talk in depth on this subject. If you will recall, just a little bit of background, um, when I presented to you in February, we discussed Mountain View as a priority for development in Clayton County. Uh, Mountain View is seven hundred and fifty acres, four hundred and nineteen parcels, one hundred and four property owners. It is a tremendous opportunity. And, uh, as I mentioned, a redevelopment priority. Uh, O A Development owns eighty-plus acres of land in Mountain View. And the presenter tonight, Mr. Dan McCray of Seaford Shaw, is here to discuss the Gilbert Road Concept Plan for your, uh, review and for any questions that you may have following. Uh, Dan is known for his expertise in finance and incentives. He's frequently retained by companies and communities to help them obtain successful project locations. Uh, he's considered an expert in finance and in economic development. So I'm very excited to have you here tonight, Dan. Also on hand, um, is the Development Authority of Clayton County's Executive Director, Mr. Larry Vincent, um, who's also in support of Dan's proposal tonight and, uh, here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the partnership discussed. So at this time, Dan, would you come forward? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm, uh, very glad to be here with the Commission again tonight in Clayton County. Uh, as Erica said so well, there's a world of opportunity in Clayton County and in the Gilbert Road part of, uh, Mountain View. I was asked to come up with some alternatives. And, uh, as was mentioned, I structure deals and put things together and try to find the best way to do things. And we have a, a couple of ways to do things. One fact, though, is that, uh, coincidentally, we have a economic development prospect, a large logistics company that's interested in locating, uh, in this area, and they need a road to do that. So as part of this, we looked at how best to do the road project, which is to straighten and widen Gilbert Road. We have, of course, the, the county's support, as was mentioned. It's a, it's a economic development and redevelopment priority. The Development Authority is supportive, and the developer is supportive. So this is an opportunity for a public-private partnership. Uh, the Commission recently adopted, uh, enacted an ordinance having to do with public-private partnerships, and that's one scenario. Uh, it's one I'm familiar with. I've, I've looked at that ordinance before in various communities to put public-private partnerships or P threes together. Uh, I've also looked at a way of doing things that we call the Mountain View Process. And in going through this, it looks like the Mountain View Process has some advantages in speed, cost, and certainty. So on a conceptual basis, I'd like to present that tonight, answer any questions. Uh, and then you'll see the next steps that would be contemplated if this is attracted to the Commission. So can we see the next slide? One more. There we go. So this is simplified. This is a conceptual plan. It's really a four-step process. Um, and this is the Mountain View Process. I'll compare and contrast it with the ordinance scenario in the next slide. So step number one is what the county and authority have done before. The county and the Development Authority would enter into an intergovernmental agreement that would provide for funding of the authority to carry out a road project. Now, those funds may come from, uh, the monetization of the intergovernmental agreement through a contract revenue bond issue, or it may be that the county has funding by means of S P L O S funds. So they would not need to be a bond issue to raise money. Uh, but we start with the intergovernmental agreement. In step two, with the authority having that agreement in hand, the authority then pivots and enters into a purchase and sale agreement with the developer, which provides for the developer to build the road and then sell the completed road to the Development Authority. And with that, the developer would actually convey title to the road project directly to the county commission. This would all be, this would be a county road. It'd be built to county specs. It'd be subject to county inspection. Uh, there are advantages to buying a completed road, but from the authority, it satisfies a constitutional requirement that the authority and the county not agree to the construction of the road. That's not permitted. Uh, but the buy, the buying of a completed road from another party is permitted. In step three, because this is a public-private partnership, the authority would issue a type of bonds called Bonds for Title, they're cashless, to acquire title to the industrial development, including the road. So that puts that in authority ownership. Now, that, it would be leased back. The industrial development would be leased back to the developer because the developer's providing the capital to develop that. And in step four, at completion, the county would inspect and accept the road project. Uh, it would then buy it using either the proceeds of bonds or other funding provided by the authority, pay the purchase price to the developer. The county would then receive title, uh, to the road project. But not unless and until the road project is completed and accepted by the county. The county's not going to spend any money until the road project is built to the county's satisfaction and accepted by the county. So this is one of my, uh, data visualizations. It's got two tracks. We're comparing the Mountain View Process to the ordinance scenario. And on the top half, you see the process where hopefully in our voting meeting next time this month, the Commission would authorize the Mountain View Process. And the next month in May, we'd have ready the intergovernmental agreement and the purchase and sale agreement for approval by the Development Authority. Then in the, uh, Commission's voting meeting in May, we would ask the Commission to approve the intergovernmental agreement. Uh, at that time, we would go to work with the bond documents, the Series A bonds to be used if they're needed to raise capital, the Series B bonds, the cashless bonds, to set up the Bonds for Title structure. And that's scheduled to occur in June. Uh, at that point in time, the developer's under contract and the developer is doing pre-construction and construction work. This carries on for the balance of this year into twenty twenty-two. And it's scheduled, the road project is scheduled to be completed in the Mountain View Process by May the first. At that point in time, we have a closing. The completed road is inspected, paid for, uh, title's conveyed to the county. Uh, and that's the end of that scenario. We're, we are successful because the deadline, we understand, for our logistics project to have the road in place is the middle of May next year. So we beat that deadline by a, a couple of weeks and hopefully by more than that. If you contrast that with the ordinance scenario, and there's nothing wrong with the ordinance scenario. That's based on the state law from twenty fifteen. Uh, it's usually used for larger projects with much larger roads, like a I two eighty-five project or something like that, if it's a road project. But that process is kicked off by an unsolicited proposal by the developer to the Department of Central Services, the county's Department of Central Services. I've allowed sixty days for that because there's a lot that has to go into that unsolicited proposal. So that's received in June, allowing the Evaluation Committee, the county's Evaluation Committee, sixty days to assemble and to review the unsolicited proposal and to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. That'll take place in August, according to this chart. We then allow, so as not to rush and to meet, uh, meeting dates, the Commission sixty days to, um, act on the recommendation and to approve or disapprove of the unsolicited proposal. If it's approved, then the Department of Central Services issues a request for proposals. This is not a sole source procurement. What the unsolicited proposal does is to put the ball in play. And based on the unsolicited proposal, the county would then issue an R F P to the world to make proposals to, uh, to carry out the road project themselves. Uh, once that R F P is issued, the ordinance and the act require ninety days for, uh, other proposers to assemble their proposal and to submit them. So that's scheduled to take place in March of next year. Uh, also in March, the Evaluation Committee would evaluate the proposals and score them, make a recommendation, uh, again, actually prepare the comprehensive agreement for consideration by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, that would take place in April of next year, assuming the Board approves the comprehensive agreement. That's the public-private partnership agreement. It would be executed with director, uh, with the developer. And at that point in time, and only at that point in time in this scenario, does the pre-construction and the construction work take place. You, you wouldn't expect somebody to start building a road while they're waiting to see whether they were selected or not and waiting to see what the agreement looks like. So that then puts allowing the same construction period in the ordinance scenario as in the, uh, Mountain View Process. Uh, it takes enough time that the road is not actually completed and delivered until April of twenty twenty-three. As you can see from my flags there, the, in the top scenario, the Mountain View Process, the process has already been completed. The, the, the race has been won. In the bottom scenario, the ordinance scenario, the, the road is delivered too late to meet prospects' needs. So that's the comparison. Again, nothing wrong with the ordinance scenario. Uh, for the proper project, it's great. And, and timing is an issue. And as I mentioned before, cost and certainty are other factors. So if we could see the next one, please. All right. This just, uh, visualizes the speed aspect of this. Uh, the ordinance scenario takes about twice as long as the Mountain View Process. Uh, and the Mountain View Process, uh, takes just short of a year, and the, um, ordinance scenario takes more than two years. Next slide, please. So costs, these are just a few. Again, there's nothing wrong with the expenditure of these costs in the ordinance scenario. They're, the state wrote these requirements into the P three law for a reason. And that's to, uh, make sure that every base was touched. So, but it involves the developer spending the time and money to prepare the unsolicited proposal, staff time to evaluate it. There's a provision for independent advisors to get involved, consulting engineers and professionals like that. The R F P has to be prepared, distributed, advertised. The road project construction is inspected. There's a mandate for performance and payment bonds and for insurance, which has to be paid for. So again, nothing wrong with that, but they do add to the project costs. Uh, and they involve the county in the construction process, and there's costs associated with that that aren't associated with the scenario where the road is completed at the time the county inspects it. So next slide, please. And then certainty, um, you know, if, uh, some of y'all, I think, have been to my sidebar conferences where we get into a presentation of the, the law and process involving, uh, economic development. And one of my favorite slides, because it's one of mine, is the hierarchy, where you start with the, the, the law that's on top. And that's the Constitution. Below that, you have state law, and below that, you have local county and city ordinances. So despite the fact that the state passed this law in twenty fifteen, the Constitution's still there. And the Constitution says that the county and the authority can enter into a multi-year agreement and that the authority can enter into a multi-year agreement with the developer. But under the ordinance scenario, the state constitutional requirements are still there. So that if, if there, a multi-year financial commitment between the county and the developer wouldn't be permitted. There could be a contract, but it's an annual appropriation contract where you have the right to walk away from the contract at the, at the end of each year. So there's more certainty in the sense that you have binding obligations on a multi-year basis. Uh, and then, you know, we have, um, the, in the ordinance scenario, there's an R F P process. Frankly, it's hard to imagine who, who would want to, uh, come in and build a road for their own account, even with, with a county contract. But you have a motivated developer, and this would activate that part of the, of the county, if the industrial tracks there need a road. And that economic stimulus would be good for the rest of the county. But the fact of the matter is, at the beginning of the ordinance scenario, you would not know with certainty who you were dealing with. You wouldn't know until later. And only at that point would the successful proposer start spending time and money on the road project. So speed, cost, uncertainty, those are the advantages that I see. Um, I've tried to make a balanced presentation to try to draw out the pros and cons of both approaches. But I, I do think that, um, this, there's a lot that commends itself, uh, to the, uh, Commission with the Mountain View Process scenario. So I've tried to keep it, um, tried to keep it brief. I've tried not to put too much legal stuff in. stuff in. If you want legal stuff, I won't go over the notes, but I'm, I've tried to keep them simple, but they're there. They answer the usual questions. So I've styled this a conceptual plan, I'm not presenting all the details. The details will be in the intergovernmental agreement and the purchase and sale agreement. Of course, it's entirely up to the Commission which path is taken or whether any path is taken, but if, if we don't cross that finish line on a timely basis, it would not meet our logistic prospects deadlines. So that's the presentation. I'm very happy to answer questions and talk for however long y'all want to talk about this, because I like this kind of stuff.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. McCray?
Yeah, I do have one, because this is a lot to digest in 20 minutes. But my first question is, has our CFO been involved in looking at some of the bond parameters?
The, the bond is, is conceptual at this point. I did, one of the footnotes says that we anticipate that the county officers and the county financial advisor would be involved in that process. Nothing is taken for granted and nothing is built into the plan having to do with the details of the bonds that would actually raise money. That's left for the process. This is at the conceptual stage.
Okay. And is, are those, are those bond funds used by the developer to pay for the road, or is the developer privately paying for the road and being reimbursed by the bond funds?
The developer is risking his capital to go out and build a road for his own account. All he's got is a contract, and that contract is with the Development Authority. So the way it would work is the county would fund the Development Authority, and the Development Authority would use those funds to buy the road. Now, the funding may be a promise to pay debt service over a period of years, or it may be a transfer of SPOSS funds, but the county's money goes to the authority, and then the authority closes on a purchase and sale agreement for the road project.
My, my next question goes to the unsolicited proposal. To me, that seems like a proposal by blind faith, especially when in the certainty it says the identity of the developer is not known. So we have a developer out there that we don't know that starts building a road. We don't know whether there's been something as simple as minority participation and what level. So how are, how within our process are some of these and some of our citizens and small businesses protected?
The, in the Mountain View process scenario, the identity of the developer's known. We only have one volunteer, and that's OA Development, and the county requirements, of course, would be included in the intergovernmental agreement between the county and the authority, and those would be passed through by the authority to the developer in the purchase and sale agreement. So whatever the county's requirements are would be built into that.
So would this be a new IGA or a modification of the existing IGA?
It would be a new one.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. For clarification purposes, the county's transportation development team would still be responsible for inspections or, or whoever's responsible for that, correct?
Absolutely.
So we will, we will be working with them side by side all along the process of building out this road.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and one of the reasons that the owners or O&amp;A wants to put forth their own money is for expediency purposes, because if they're waiting on the county to build up the road, then it's going to be a little while before we get to that point. So this moves up the project a whole lot sooner, and there's a lot of development that's been, that's waiting to be had out in the Mountain View area. So, you know, we've been waiting to see this major development in this area for a long time now, and I appreciate the work that the Development Authority and Erica and her office has been doing to make sure that we're getting the attention that we need to get this project going, the roadway, but not only the roadway, but bringing in other developers to make sure that we, this is premium properties. So we'd have to bring all of the property owners together and adjust the way we think in our land use for that area to accommodate what we want to see in the, in the, in the future, we as a board. So I appreciate Mr. McCray, the work that you've done in this area, and again, the staff appreciate Larry and Erica as well. Are there any other questions for Mr. McCray and the staff?
Chairman, can I also, can I also add that one of my major concerns is that in, we don't want to give anyone a blank check with these bonds to go out to do development in our county. We know this is a prime area, and we want to see it develop, but I just want to be careful that we are not giving anyone a blank check of unlimited funds that they know they're going to be reimbursed for to do, to do work in our county.
You're absolutely correct, and that, that won't happen. There will be detailed specifications in the purchase and sale agreement, and it's subject to county acceptance, and there'll be a maximum contract price, all of that. Now, I realize you haven't seen that, but this is a conceptual plan, and if the Board decides to say, you know, go away and come back with some documents that we can look at and our staff can look at, I anticipate that as part of the process, I'm counting on it. We, we need the county staff and county participation in this.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hamburg?
Uh, yes. Who will be in charge, responsible for the maintenance of this road?
It'll become a county road, and it will be the county, of course, that does the maintenance. It'll never be placed in service by the developer or the Development Authority. At completion, it will go directly to the county.
And who will own it after all the process and all finishes? Who will own, who will actually own this road?
The entity that paid for it, which is the county.
Okay. And maybe I missed it, but when does this process start if it's approved or agreed upon?
If, the, the timeline that I gave you anticipates that you all would be able to say in your next meeting this month, go ahead and prepare documents and come back to us, but it takes the time it takes. If you're not ready at the next meeting to say, go do some documents, and you, I'm happy to answer questions or do whatever is necessary between now and then, and these are really good questions tonight, but the real work begins in the preparation of the intergovernmental agreement and in the preparation of the purchase and sale agreement. I've allowed, I think, 90 days for that, and it's going to take every bit of that to get it done, because this is, it's, it's got to be detailed, and it's got to be right, and it's got to go through the process.
Yes.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
In preparation of the next meeting that we have forthcoming, I believe is on the 20th, if you could make your presentation available to all of the Commissioners, we would appreciate that, so we can further digest what you presented tonight. Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, thank you for this presentation, and I'm loving the fact of a, of a P3 partnership and something that need to apply that concept to many other areas in, in our county, but I want to just piggyback on the questions that have already been asked and get a little bit more clarity specifically when you said the intergovernmental agreement, and you said it's a separate one. So this intergovernmental agreement is specific to this project and germane to this project alone, correct? Or no?
Exactly, that's exactly right.
Okay, because I, I just wanted to make sure that we got clarity on that. So this, this intergovernmental agreement has no bearing on anything else that may or may not exist? Okay. All right. The other thing is, you mentioned that the, the county would be basically delivering the funds over, you said delivering something over to the Development Authority, and then the bonds will be issued, but with that being stated, the question came too about who will own it. It's the entity that paid for, but is that going to be spelled out initially in an intergovernmental agreement, or does the transfer have to take place to where that the road is transferred back to the county? What is that process?
The, the intergovernmental agreement is going to require the Development Authority to do some things, and it's going to require the road to meet standards and be delivered at a price and within a time period. If those things don't happen, then there's no closing, and the developer's lost his money. If they do happen, then at closing, if the county has the funds, this is about $4 million, might be SPOSS money, so we might not have any bonds. I mean, I'd, I'd like it if there weren't any bonds, there's enough work to do without them, but if, if there's not enough money to do it, then the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement, would say for 10 years or 15 years or 20 years, whatever, the, the annual debt service would be paid, and those would be Development Authority contract revenue bonds. It wouldn't take a referendum. So in, if the bonds are issued, then the, a bank would provide the funding by buying that bond, and the bank would be repaid by payments going from the county to the Development Authority to the bank.
I'm clear. But in the meantime, we're going to service the road while all this is taking place, right?
There's no service, it's a road being built, and then when it's completed and added to the county's road network, I mean, this is, there's a road there now. All we're doing is straightening and widening it, so the maintenance of the straightened and widened road would be accepted by the county along with the road that exists there now.
Right, and I hear you clearly, and I'm aware of that, and I heard you, but I know of specific instances in our county to where we've had to go out and repaint roads that were built sometime before. So I'm, I'm interested in seeing this process as we move through it, and then also, I think it's key to our board, as has already been alluded to, that we make sure that everything, every aspect is included in that agreement, including, including any type of warranty of the road, so that we're not assuming any type of issues with the road, as we talked about it earlier. Even though we're inspecting it and we're being involved in it, we're not going to expect every aspect of the road, every piece of the road. So I think that there, we have to keep in mind that there has to be some time period that the, those constructing that road need to still be liable or responsible for any type of issues or repairs with it. And I'm only been in government for five years, but I've seen it happen, sir.
I've been doing this for 40, and I've seen it happen too, but it's not going to happen with this.
Oh, oh, wow. All right, we, I like your confidence.
I have, okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Franklin? Yes, I, I have a question. What's your name again, sir?
Dan McCray.
Okay, Mr. McCray, okay, your involvement, are, are you involved in this project at all? Or at this point, who do, who do you represent?
My client now is the developer. I've been working with the Development Authority as I customarily do, but my client is the developer.
O&amp;A?
That's right.
Oh, okay. Okay. And this may be in the agreement, if we end up going the bonding way or whatever, do you know, or have any idea who the bonding company will be?
I just anticipate this will be a bank placement. It's about a $4 million bond, and that's normally placed with a bank, but I would rely on the advice of the county CFO and the financial advisor about that. The conceptual plan assumes it's a bank because of the relatively small amount, but it's whatever we come up with is the best way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. McCray.
Thank you. I really appreciate the chance to be here with y'all tonight. These are great questions. I like doing this kind of work with, with this community, so thank you again, and I'm stand ready to keep on answering questions till we've gotten this done.
I'd like to come out and aid you, sir. Thank you.
We'll put y'all speed down to make sure that we get those questions.
Larry knows where to find him. Erica does, too.
All right, well, please make sure that we get a copy of that presentation.
Yes, sir.
And appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, that concludes our agenda for this, this evening. Are there any announcements by any Commissioners or State members? All right, well, here and done. Have a good evening, everyone, and God bless.
Thank you.